Motion to... What do we do with the letters?
Sign the letter.
Send the letter? Okay. Motion to sign the letter and send it to 70 Hartwell.
Done. Okay, the next one we're talking about is 21 Franklin Street. 21 Franklin, we met with them...
Oh, this is where they were...
...years ago. And everything looks good. They're doing a good job out there. Good citizens in the community. There was some miscommunication somewhere back a year and a half ago or so, well, three years ago. It's the second paragraph talks about the September 12, 2014 Planning Board meeting where we talked about this planting shade trees that's required by the zoning. They didn't get a variance on the zoning, which they're allowed to, but they need to plant the shade trees to be in full compliance, but now it's not the time of year to be planting the trees. So, we can issue this and recommend a certificate of completion be issued, but we ask that they...
Oh, okay.
...confirm that the trees are growing before they get their license renewal next December. Because they need to get a license every year from the selectmen.
If that's the case, we should CC the selectmen then.
No, when the time comes, you know, we can do that.
We have, we have a connection on board.
Yeah. When the time comes, we can do that.
The time's gonna come. They're not gonna plant their tree.
If you CC it now, then the renewal comes in December, nobody will remember it.
Well, what do we just... No, that's not the point. It's when the renewal comes in December and you say, "Remember when we sent out that letter that says we wanted them to plant a tree?"
So, this letter you want to CC?
So, why don't we send a copy of this to Nancy Lucier? She'll keep track of it.
Where would you want them to plant a tree?
Right by the parking spaces.
Right out in the corner, so when you're taking a left, you can't see any traffic?
No, no, no. That's not what the zoning says.
Right.
So, you're just buying liquid in there.
I know. What is this?
It's just a small lot, I don't think it needs to be stopped. I know that's looking...
Well, we've got, you've got where the building is, the access road comes in...
I've been there many times.
She's talking weird.
Well, so basically, we're looking for it somewhere here, here, or there. Trees near the parking spaces is the idea.
Yeah, I just don't want it to be the sightlines, because it's...
The sightlines, this goes out 30 feet. This is, this one, anywhere over here is not gonna be in the sightline.
As long as it's inward of their flagpole, I think we're good.
Because this goes way down the road. Oh, it's not even close to the flagpole. Flagpole's down here. Put five feet off the pavement, you're all set.
Do any of those trees have to be to shade the house property?
Nope. Nope. It's a zoning requirement for parking lots.
Somebody wanna make a motion to set that one then?
I would sign that one, motion.
A motion to sign the one to the liquor store. 21 Franklin Street. Sign it and go.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
All right. You guys ready for, which one do you want first? The senior center? You guys ready?
You wanna do the police station first? That's shorter.
Sure. Yep. So, we got the police station, a request from the town administrator to schedule a site walk, and then there was a question about whether the work was done. There was the fence...
Permission, permission from the abutters to go...
No, this is, that's a separate issue that, in regard to the requirement in our site plan review, is that there would be a separate fence...
Yeah.
...to screen the chain link fence, which is not allowed under zoning, but it was allowed because it was required. They were told, we were told at our meeting that it was a safety, security issue. So, what we thought we agreed to, or what I thought we agreed to, was that we would have them put a fence up next to the chain link fence to block the chain link fence, which is what our zoning requires. So...
Yes.
We got an email back. Have you guys, are you guys up to date on all that? We got an email back saying that their, the fence is not up.
Yes.
I saw the email, but it sounds like there's nothing to be caught up on.
Well, the only strange thing was just like, why go on the neighbor's property to put a fence?
Well, I guess, and correct me if I'm wrong, I think the property, the neighbor's property fence is a whole different thing, because, well, actually, why don't you tell us what, I just got an email from Anita.
The neighbors, the two neighbors are right. Their fence is for this different situation. We just found out about this when you sent us the email on Monday, or when anyone sent the email. You're right, correct, it's not screened and kind of structured and not, we're going on fault. We needed a fence there, because it was a...
Isn't, wasn't it in the, was it in our approval letter?
I thought it was a condition, I believe, condition number five.
Yeah.
Initially, we thought that the chief's recommendation was to put slats in the chain link fence, that they can post that, and then it came back through an email, which unfortunately got dropped, that the decision of the board was to put secondary screening fence in front of the impound fence.
Yeah.
And it was middle of winter, and from what I understand, the OPM agreed we could do it, but it comes spring, it fell off the table.
Last winter, okay.
So, we're asking two solutions, either continue with the fence, we're gonna use the privacy fence for the other two neighbors, and ask this new neighbor if we can continue with another 60 feet to screen it there, or...
That long?
Put a fence in there, it's about 60 feet.
Do you have a plan of...
Is it the full length of the, from that, like that walkout deck to the back of the building, or the back of the property?
It's from the back corner of the facility...
Yeah.
...to the, obviously, the back corner of the, where the chain link is.
It's where, it's for the impound there.
Yeah, and that's 60 feet?
This just happened to be a blow up. I was doing this for the purpose of trying to get a price to do it.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, that's exactly what we're doing.
So, where then, so there's gonna be one fence, or where is the proposed fence?
The chain link fence is coming off the corner.
Yeah.
There's about a two-foot stone strip there for drainage, and we're gonna put it in, right on the edge of the stone strip. There's already, obviously, a lot of evergreens, but those trees are there.
Okay.
And where's the patio?
The patio is probably about...
Way up there, okay.
Yeah.
Is that screened?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, no, the patio is, yeah, actually, it is screened, yes.
There's a fence, there's a...
Well, that's a fence, I thought you were continuing, and I was...
No, there's a fence they're putting on along the property line here. The same material fence that we're using here, which is the same fence with a little lattice top on it, we're proposing to use it here, so it's consistent.
Okay.
That sounds fine, that sounds good.
Or, as I said, there's the other option to run...
Or, continue with the fence, we're gonna put it on the other two neighbors and see if this neighbor would like to grab it out there.
That privacy fence that's already there, or that's going by the patio?
No, we're gonna install, we're gonna install it. We couldn't install it, because we're not gonna go on neighbor's property to install it. It's nothing to do with the planning board, it's just the, it's a agreement we made with the neighbors to install the privacy fence to screen the police station from there, by the houses. And so, we're gonna, whatever you think would be better, to just continue with this one, or just put this other fence, whatever we just talked about.
So, we could have the option of either this type of fence running adjacent to the chain link fence, or a privacy fence similar to what's gonna be installed in the first two lots, continuing down to the next neighbor, which we're against...
Do the same thing.
...basically, that you might have.
Is that the last neighbor that could see this?
Yes.
I mean, the idea sounds, as long as there's a fence between the neighbors and the chain link fence...
In the biggest community, well, this is, it's higher, the property line's higher from neighbors, so they will see even less...
Which one?
The elevation for the...
If you move it closer.
No, no, no.
All, okay.
If you put the fence on the neighbor's property...
Oh, yes, okay.
Because it's about three feet, three feet high, something like that, four feet.
Yeah, it changes, but yeah.
It'll probably be a...
Yeah, that sounds good. Does the...
Neighbor has to allow it.
Well, neighbor, okay. But does the...
We have to ask the neighbor...
We have to ask that third neighbor.
They have to allow it, rather than that, if we have...
I recall that, asking that question when they were, when people were here, and people were very, they said, "Sure, you can plant trees and come on to, and fence on our property."
We have a commission for two neighbors.
Okay.
But we just need to, we just found out this other one, and we'll go see the next neighbor.
And we also need to look at the land.
Yeah, right.
See if there's rocks and trees, then we're gonna have to...
And does the chief have any, is there any safety concern about having a continuous fence, so people can hide behind the, whatever, be on the other side of the fence, and the people in the police station wouldn't know about it?
The neighbors.
The police station, obviously.
I mean, I don't know, does he have any concerns? Does he care?
No, he knows the fence is going up.
Okay. And he doesn't care which one? Okay. Then I would like the one on the property.
He has a chain link for the safety, that's what he wants.
Yep.
It's better actually, limit access to the site, we're better to have...
A continuous fence? Then I like the continuous fence that goes on the neighbor's property, you know, higher.
Can we get a sketch, whatever you decide with the neighbors, can we get a sketch before it gets built? And then, I think, it sounds like we'll be fine with it, but just so we all know what we're really talking about and where it's going.
Well, I'll source it, a great party to do is, well, I'll do that before, give it to you, copy it before we do it.
Yeah, we, we're gonna be meeting in two weeks, and then two weeks after that, so we're in a pretty regular state.
The problem will be doing it till spring, you know, before we...
Well, if we get a plan together, we can prove it now, and then build it whenever you want.
Would they have to get a, are we considering this part of the project, so they don't have to get a building permit or anything special?
As long as it's not over a 65 fence, or up to an eight feet, I guess it is, fence they don't need.
Then it's just as a right...
And that's a building inspector stuff, that's not us. It wouldn't...
No, I was just trying to avoid any more, they could just do it if it's part of the project.
Either way, they can just do it, we just wanna put it in in the right place once.
Yep.
So, that'd be good.
We'll make sure it's not, we'll make sure it's right, it'll be the plan for the fourth year.
Excellent.
So, if that's the case, do we have a letter?
No. No, we don't have anything on that, just because we're gonna wait till it's done and then write the letter.
And we'll hold off the visit.
What's the visit? They're gonna put us in the cell?
They said, "Do you wanna come and see everything before, and then recommend the certificate of completion?"
Is it, is it much different than the open house? I mean, is there anything more done?
Nothing's been done.
Everything's done, it's okay.
I didn't go.
This fence, okay.
I didn't, I haven't been to the site.
You can contact the chief, if you wanna, if folks wanna go see it, contact the chief and he'll...
Wait a minute, is the, is the evidence room active?
Yeah.
So, then you can't see it?
Yeah.
No, you can't see it now? Now that it's an active...
You can tell them what you saw.
Okay, well, there was, there was a bunch of empty shelves.
Yeah, you wanna see the site, the chief will shovel off the site for you.
Okay, good.
That makes it a...
I like to see that.
After Friday, we'll see it. All right, so that one's good. Then we wanna go into the senior center? Submit all the site plan review application.
Okay. All right, I'll go for it.
Wait. They're applying for a permit?
What's the name?
They did a name for the...
Stripe shirt.
Oh, John McMillan, uh, Kill...
But they're, but they're different.
I was gonna say.
Site plan review.
Yeah, they did a site plan review. Oh, we didn't know we got that from...
The company?
It was there.
Kill, I'll give you that.
It's easier.
What do you want me to do?
Thanks.
Thank you.
Ready?
Ready.
Okay. Thelma Replaces Associates, we're the site engineer for the senior center. And I'm not really sure where to begin. These are site lighting plans, which we had asked when we made the original submissions, if we could give them to you tonight, because they weren't ready at the time we made the application. This is a, I marked this up just a little bit, I guess I'll get to it.
We're actually gonna have to cover any of the factual material, this is the submittal of the application and the package.
Okay.
At the public hearing, we'll take all the, show the pretty pictures and stuff, but right now, we just need to see that everything is in place. We got all the plans that we needed?
Yep.
The fees, most importantly?
Well, I was gonna, that's what was in my mind, but we've got everything, is everything gone? Well, no, it hasn't gone, because one of the questions was, do we send it off to VHB or not?
That is what I've been, I put in, distributed to the different ones.
Okay, so it happened.
But, I don't know when to VHB and how.
I thought we weren't gonna do VHB, like the police station.
I don't, well, we ran into troubles.
No, they do, they do have a...
When we had the police station, we didn't end up doing the engineering review.
Regarding the fee and the VHB, they do have a request.
Yeah, that's what I heard, but that's, that was the only, that's why I didn't wanna get into that.
Okay.
So, I think we had everything, and then the question came up, we got a request from the town administrator to waive application fees and to not have VHB do the review and waive any review fees.
What do we do, didn't we have like a contingency or something like that, just in case there was a problem?
Five hundred dollars.
Something like that? Just in case there was a problem, we could get VHB to answer whatever questions they need?
We'd, we'd, VHB, we did five hundred dollars as we take it.
Do that?
All right.
Well, I mean, whatever we did before, we can do again? Okay.
I'm not sure that it worked out that well last time.
Oh, it definitely didn't.
Because that, I mean, that was the thing, is that if it didn't work out well the last time, we hadn't done the drainage review, they ended up having to go to the state and that drainage, even though it was a different engineer. The drainage was reviewed, and then it cost the town another, what, six, eight thousand dollars to do the drainage correctly on the second try with the mass D O T.
If I wanted it done a particular way, and then they changed their mind.
Well, this one's easy, because don't you, aren't you doing no real underground drainage and all rain gardens?
Completely different, yes.
So, it's all rain gardens? We've never had trouble with rain gardens.
It's actually drainage basins, no rain gardens.
It's, what do they call it?
Drainage basins.
Oh, well, okay. We've had trouble with rain gardens.
Again, in our, last time, VHB didn't pick up the stormwater too, right? So, they're...
So, they did a minor, they just did...
They didn't pick up.
They did a minor review of the project. It wasn't a complete review, because we asked them not to do...
So, if we have to do the complete review, we have to spend a lot of money.
We have to spend some money, I mean, it's a, you're asking for how much money from the town?
Oh, yeah.
How much did you ask the town for? We're up to what, five and a half million dollars for this project?
Or...
The whole project?
Senior center, yeah.
I think the initial town meeting was...
One, two?
Six and a half.
Six and a half.
So, you're looking at six and a half million dollars, and you guys looking to have no review that's gonna cost, what?
Five thousand.
Five thousand, seven thousand dollars?
Well, the purpose of the...
Six million dollar project.
But the purpose of the review is to have, is for the good of the town, make sure everything is done correctly.
Right.
We have, we have, exactly, and we have places to do review, and we have the, I'm gonna have to do review also.
We're working up the...
I think the logic...
On behalf of the town, no, it's not like Cumberland Farms, where it's a third party who what they're working for. Everybody's working on it, not...
Yeah, they're working, but in general, in an engineering, when you do engineering design, it's usually an engineering review. I mean, it's ninety-five, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but ninety-five or higher percent of the time, an engineer does the plan and he stamps it, and then another engineer reviews it. That's just the way it's typically done.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't suggest that it's ninety-five. Usually, in complicated and difficult projects, they'll give peer review, and the building code allows that, I mean, corresponding to the building code. But nominal projects don't normally have a peer review, in my opinion.
In, in engineering, not in architectural stuff.
Weird when it's like...
Start with engineering, start with engineering, yes.
Okay, so, my company, we are peer reviewers for three different communities. We are, they are peer review engineers, and it depends on the community, by means of example, we are the review engineer for the town of Boxborough, plus we're the town of Boxborough's design engineer. So, in that situation, we act in both capacities, we review other people's, but when we do a design for the town of Boxborough, it is not peer review, because we are their agent. Other towns, it, in my experience, it's fifty-fifty when, when I'm an agent for a town. So, when I worked in other towns, because we do a lot of police and fire stations, line municipal facilities, it's fifty-fifty whether the town elects to hire an engineer to review our work or not. You know, we've given you a certification as to the design of the system, meeting all the D E P criteria, it's in there, but, you know, we can withstand a review without any issue, we're very confident, because we review other people's work, and we do this, this is what we do for a living, public projects, six one heft is the other, we can explain our drainage system design in great detail, make sure everybody understands. We didn't make any errors on it, because we have it in-house. The, the design engineer is a P E, the person that stamps it is a P E, and she's the second reviewer. So, everything gets reviewed by two professional engineers internally before it goes out.
Wasn't, wasn't the logic on the police station that we had our, what's it called?
OPM.
We had the OPM, and it was his responsibility to sort of keep an eye on things in the town's interest?
So, you really have to be so advised.
I mean, yeah, and not that he's a technical guy, but if there was something that was coming up that was looking...
We have the same OPM.
Yeah.
Still go.
I mean, that didn't work out as well as it should have been.
Well, I can't, I just...
I mean, I have, I have confidence in places, in a design engineer, so that is a step in the right direction. But, it's, how many of the people who come before us, well, actually, the subdivision that came before us, they said, "Well, do we need it to have an engineer review this?" And obviously, if it's gonna be a town street...
Yeah, but again, and I, this is a...
They all asked, "Do we have to have it?" And I like to be consistent to say, "Yes, we need to have it," but it's a board decision, you're...
Again, this is a town project.
I think that's what makes it different than a private project.
Again, and I...
We want somebody reviewing the project on behalf of the town, with the town's interest in mind.
Yeah.
And the person prepared the design and reviewed it is actually that person, because he's paid to do that. You already have a paid engineer reviewing and preparing the work.
I've worked on so many school projects, because I am a school administrator, and over the years with building projects, and there's been so many errors in public school building projects, that's what makes me nervous, is that knowing the past history of, of public building projects that have, have so many errors, that's the one thing that makes me nervous, is I know that it's not a foolproof system, because I've lived it.
I understand. And a peer review doesn't guarantee no error.
Yeah, you don't know.
But that said, it is your decision, I just wanted to point out the, the logic of our request.
Well, that's, I'm, I'm always speaking for my own...
With what was said there, though, you don't know if they were reviewed. They might have already been reviewed, and there was still problems. I've never seen or read about any school built that doesn't have a problem.
Correct.
We don't know if they've been reviewed, though. They could have been reviewed, they could have been fifty percent of the towns they could have reviewed.
Right, right. So, just trying to...
But a school is a horse, I do schools, and a school is a horse of a different color, because they're big.
Yeah.
They're hundreds of millions, or eighties of millions of dollars, and they're complicated, and you dig up a lot of dirt, and you do a lot of things. This one's pretty straightforward, it's a building in place of a building on top of a hill. Just my two cents again. I'll stand back there and...
If it goes to the VHP, how much you are expecting, cost wise?
What's our typical cost? Probably, it's probably about five, five or six thousand.
First one, first one will be fifteen to two thousand, and then over the project, but five thousand or so.
At least fifteen thousand dollars. So, again, you know, we have...
Fifty thousand?
No.
Fifty hundred?
You'd think.
First, first review will be fifteen hundred.
Additional.
It'll probably cost five thousand, five thousand dollars for the review.
It was nine thousand on the police station.
We went around a couple of times. Every time you go around, you...
Oh, we understand that, that's why, that's why we...
Keeps going. And I think that was a great move, I agree with that, but it's probably gonna be about, it should be about three or four, but I'm thinking we say five or six, which still is not a drop in the bucket compared to six and a half million for the whole project, so...
Can I just say something in regards to that? I don't know how many meetings I've been at, that people who said, "This is a six million dollar project, another five, another ten, another twelve, another fifteen."
No, it's a seven million dollar project.
No, it's, it's six and a half million now, because, I know it's...
Well, it's built in, if you did the designing right, or the contracting right, you would have it set up that a percentage of the construction is for development, for the development process, and if you included all the expected costs, these costs should already be in there, because I remember meeting with you guys, with the FISB, saying, "You need to include these costs on the senior center, because you didn't do it on the police station," and I was assured that all these costs were gonna be included in the design for the senior center. So, they should be in there.
No, there's no question of budget in, of that, it's just that along this entire design process, we have been asked to maintain, you know, the lowest possible cost of delivering this project to the town, and in that attitude is how everybody on the FISB and the design team has approached this project. So, this is, this is five thousand dollars, which could be five thousand dollars with the construction of the building, or it could be five thousand dollars somewhere else, and the question is, is do we want, do we think that's the best value for this five thousand dollars, here or maybe somewhere else? So, that's...
Great, that's the question, yeah.
And if it covers, if it comes up with, and solves some problem that was unforeseen, and somehow, you know, it, the project goes along a little more smoothly, it was well worth it. If the project goes along smoothly anyways, then it wasn't worth it. I mean, I don't know what to say.
Mostly what we got from the last review on the police station was a lot of recommendations that would have ended up raising the cost of the project. Grind the curbs would be better than asphalt curbs. Yes, we all know that. You know, so there was a lot of recommendations which were good recommendations, but we just, the FISB decided to ignore them because they were going for a certain price point to the project. So that was, you know, that was a good amount of what the review was.
That was the biggest, I think the biggest percentage of the review was all just his, a different engineer's recommendations. But there wasn't, it wasn't, I don't think a lot of it was to protect the town. Because look at all the people we have reviewing, we still miss that, that drainage issue. And if you say if we had spent another five thousand, we would have found it? We don't know that. That's...
We don't say it.
We don't know. It's one of those things that...
Well, I mean, I don't want to say it, but if we had never found it, the project might just be the same as it is now anyways. You know what I mean?
Right. It went back and forth, but that's...
Yeah, actually, we got to the point where they accepted our design.
Oh.
There was an issue of the safety of putting up a guardrail because of the pitch.
Oh, okay, well, the guardrail then, but I mean...
So they ended up stacking into our design.
The cost, the cost was going back and forth and we finally ended up doing what we thought we were doing originally.
Which place?
And it cost sixty thousand dollars to do that.
What with the reviews?
That was the state P O T.
I guess what we could do is just make it clear that, as a board, that we don't necessarily agree, but go ahead with it or let it, but beyond them, that the selectmen, you know what I mean?
Yeah, responsibility for...
Responsibility is on them.
What with the O P M or something? I mean, put it, put it to, it's somebody else's responsibility to keep, that you can bounce ideas off of.
Well, definitely your responsibility.
Well, or our review engineer.
Still, your, your review engineer is not responsible.
No, not responsible, but I mean, you know, if you come up with a good design and the review engineer agrees, I mean, you sort of, you get the sort of better feeling that...
Have you met other engineers? Put two engineers in a room, you answer your many answers.
Mark, even if the V H P reviews, even if they miss it, so it's, even the planning board, how much do we have responsibility on that?
Oh, no, I'm not worried about the responsibility. I screwed up many things here in planning.
Then, yeah, there are so many things that may go wrong, but, you know, to save the money for the town, you know, so no V H P review.
Well, can we do the same thing we did before, which was have that contingency just in case something blows up?
Just five hundred dollars.
I think what we have is, I mean, if...
They had one, one minor...
We had for the ASBIL, well, it's the intent for the, push for the ASBIL to get the certification. The five, they still have five hundred dollars in the account because they haven't gotten the final ASBIL paperwork done incomplete. So that's why that five hundred is there, and I think it's still in the account. We haven't spent it.
Sure.
So do we want to just hold that into, in the account or would that mess up your bill?
No, that's...
Just hold that in the account if that's what the point is to do something like that.
I don't want to say we're not going to have any engineering backup to questions we have, you know, because, I mean, like, if there was some, you know, issue that came up and we were getting three different, four different opinions from different people, different things, different everything, and it was just like, we felt important enough or something like that, we would just like the option to go and ask V H P saying, which of these makes sense? These seem all sort of contradictory. And they would say something and, you know.
It's not going to...
I don't think they will get too much.
But, but I agree, and I'm not sure, I think we're in a better position with the FISB and with the way the process for this senior center has gone than the police station. So we're in a better position, better design engineer, I think. So I'm more confident in doing it with a little more free. The planning board in our site plan review, we're allowed to charge for any outstanding, whether we need a lawyer or an engineer to review it. In our regulations, we're allowed to do that. So even if the selectmen don't want to pay it, or the FISB doesn't want to pay it, it's in our bylaws that we can ask for and we can get it done and then the bill will go to the developer. So what we normally do is we get the money upfront because we know there's going to be some charges. So what we can do now is, if everybody's okay with that, and I think the review fee, we could just waive the review fee, but have a caveat that we can keep, I don't know if we even want to keep the five hundred dollars in because that's not going to do a lot for us, but just have the caveat that we're all going to agree that be professional and responsible, that if there is a question that the planning board feels needs to have a second set of eyes, a professional set of eyes on it, that we'll talk about it and then review it. Does that make sense?
The board would be entitled to seek out expertise to answer its questions if it's not satisfied with the answers received from us, right?
Well, or if you guys aren't agreeing on something, we need some tiebreaker.
I don't think we'll ever come in front of you folks and we won't agree with the...
Or not you, I would like, I don't know, somebody's having...
The committee?
No, like if the architect wants something, the engineer says not to.
I doubt very much that that will ever happen.
Okay.
And these engineers aren't going to all fight in the office and we're going to bring that idea. They're going to iron it out.
Bring it in.
They're going to iron it out and bring the best plan from...
The one I would argue with that was O P M, because I'm O P M.
Yeah.
If there's an issue.
Which he does.
Which he, he does, he does, he did it all time with his issue.
He is never going to come to us to ask us for advice. I know he won't.
Well, he's not there anymore. That personality is not...
The company, Cardinal Construction is still there.
But you're having, you have an O P M.
Yeah, of course. Cardinal Construction is still there.
But the...
But it's not Tony?
Man of us.
Right, right, he's, right.
He's still there.
So we, we still have the same company watching.
Yeah, no, that, I mean, that, but I don't think that they, they also have the mandate to keep the budget down, and they're not going to come to us and say, hey, you know, we're having trouble settling this, can you call in V H P? I mean, that's not going to be the, the way they do it.
Because they have their leverage over us, because they're paying us, so.
Right, and that's the logic, is that you're already being paid to do it, you know?
So if they say something's not done right, then they don't, they don't get paid. They don't get the invoices.
Okay, so why don't we, what do people think as far as, we definitely need to pay attention to things. I mean, that's the key, and that's what we're going to try to...
Could we ask for, like, the, the police station, I don't know, status reporting or something, like monthly reporting, didn't quite get to us very much.
Well, he gave you access to ProCore.
I know, but I never looked.
Yeah, but that's, that's not why our requirement... You must have done the whole committee and just say this.
Our, yeah, the whole issue is, is to leave...
Like, the old, V H P sends us, like, reports whenever they do something, you know, so you just see how it works, it shows up.
From, from, no, from...
Well, we're in the design right now. Cardinal, send us the report that talks about the status of the site. I don't need to know that the bills for the heating and ventilation came in fifteen hundred dollars higher than they were, and then three megabytes worth of data about other stuff that I don't need.
More like what V H P...
So our project manager, I would say, will, will get that to you.
And it's a summary, just make it attached. Just, I don't need to go through and enter some secret code and get into some database and search through database for whatever information, which I've never done, so it may be really easy, but send me something to look at, so I know what's working.
Just deliver to your email.
Email.
It says, "Planning board at Westport."
Update email every week we got, like, email every month.
A month is fine, every month is fine. If you do weekly, that's fine. If it's just a simple little follow-up.
I think the, Tony talked about the minutes to like a Monday meeting or something like that?
Yeah, we have this construction meeting every Monday morning.
Yeah, and he was saying he would start, he would send those to us, but I don't think we ever got them. But that's the kind of thing that would be nice to have.
I need to send.
Can we agree to, when we get the project, we'll have the project manager, you guys tell us what you want and he'll get it.
Well, it'll be in our orders and conditions. Actually, it'll be a copy of the last orders of conditions if you want to read those. It's the standard thing that we always do. I mean, we try to be consistent throughout.
Are you going to do the same sort of construction, like a weekly meeting?
Get back to finalizing the review fees.
Review fees.
So, are we okay?
Okay, we just waived them all.
We're okay with reviewing, waiving the review fee?
Most of the way, the review fees.
And we have a second?
Second.
I think you should abstain because you're on the FISB.
All in favor?
Aye.
No, it doesn't matter. And so then the other fee is the application fee, which pays for our time and clerk. In the past, we've cut that in half.
Melanie, will you want here?
Yes.
I think, I mean, I think half would be reasonable. Yeah.
Four thousand one hundred and forty dollars would be half.
No, that's the engineering review.
I think it was four hundred and fifty dollars last time.
Yeah, it's like twelve hundred bucks.
Is a, is a application fee?
Oh, nine hundred bucks, yeah.
Okay.
Nine hundred dollars is application or something like that?
I got it.
The last time was four hundred and fifty dollars each.
Probably half of them. Application fee doesn't have to do with, you know, the size of the project, does it?
Yeah, it was nine hundred, yeah, less than, the area that you're working in, the site is more than three acres, right?
Thirteen twenty-eight.
Oh, it's even more, okay. So it would have been fifteen hundred, but...
But the building itself is small, right?
It's at the end of the...
Seven fifty, seven hundred and fifty dollars.
Thought it was four fifty.
Well, that's because the acreage on the other lot was smaller. And it's, that's what I'm looking at now, is areas less than three acres, it's nine hundred, areas greater than ten acres, it's fifteen.
Much property you disturb it, not the whole property.
So you're going to be altering less than three acres or so, or both three acres?
There we go.
Because you're going to need to do a sweep, right, for the construction general permit requirements?
Yes, because we're altering more than an acre.
Right. So it's...
Four hundred and fifty.
So...
Or six hundred, go in between.
So we can pay Melanie, you want to do the four fifty again?
Four fifty?
Four fifty should be...
She's working on it.
So four, so, so just an application fee of four hundred and fifty dollars.
Right, and waive the engineering fees.
We already got that.
Unless something really goes wrong.
Yeah, most of the, yeah, most of the, where the, reduce the application fee to four fifty.
Four hundred and fifty. All in favor?
Second. Mark, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good. All right, anything else?
Question, where would, you've just received the application, I understand. When would you expect, what might the timetable be for the hearing?
As soon as you want.
We're off the bid list now, we'll be off the bid list...
Well, take the V H P thing off, that was...
Oh, we don't have to do that slip, you're not going to V H P. We need at least, what is it, thirty days in the bylaw, the town boards are...
I have articles of all...
Right. And the town boards have thirty days to respond, so hopefully we'll get responses from all the town boards, you can encourage that. Since we don't have V H P doing the review, we're going to be counting on the other boards, so the building inspector, all of them need to get something to us so that we can act on the date of the hearing, which I think is the twenty...
February fourteenth?
February fourteenth.
You submitted a full set of construction documents to the town end of December, multiple sets to building inspector and everybody else, so they should have those drawings and should be reviewing them now.
And they need to be reminded that they sent a comment letter to the planning board.
Wasn't it, didn't Melanie do it all again?
Melanie sent them a reminder, but oftentimes it doesn't happen, so it's in their best interest to have something come to us so that we can say, oh, yeah, fire chief did look at it and he thinks it's great, the D P W likes it and he's all set with it.
Electric mower.
Otherwise, we're going to be like, well, this doesn't look quite right, and then we need a...
We know the waterworks.
To do it. What's that?
We know the waterworks because...
We need a pump.
We need a pump? Further up the street, it was, it was better.
Nope.
What was, what was Ali's project further up in?
Oh, no, he needed, he needed a pump. He had problems with the water. But this should help because you're looping things through to a portion of drive.
We're actually not looping, we're not going through a horseshoe. If you don't help us, we need a pump because of the pressure where we're at, and we can't increase the pressure in the existing town pipes because of their age and composition.
Then why did Ali get away with no fire, he, he has fire hydrants, he didn't have to put in the fire suppression pumps. What the heck? He said it was fine.
Look up his report.
Well, he had, no, but we, we had talked about that.
He didn't want to spend the money on the pump, on the pumps, so we commissioned the testing of the water lines all the way from the bottom of the street down at, like Troy Lee's, all the way up. And they tested the pumps, yeah, well, yeah, and there's a report on it.
A water test, yeah.
And they said that it was okay. And in that development, which is newer circle, which is probably half again down the road...
Seven house lots. They may have a different type of construction, I mean, but...
Well, it's residential, it's a...
We have a full test from the hydrants on the property.
Yep.
That is the date of all of our inspections, your calculations, and we weren't, we didn't have no problem.
You didn't check the, but that's an asbestos line going into that property, so that could be crap going in on the...
So we're tapping like the main in the street, we're leaning slightly...
So that's what you tested, the one on the, on the street?
We tested one on the, I believe we tested one on the property.
The level of property measured on the street. So when, when you do it, you need two, two points. I, I didn't, I didn't do it, but I read the reports.
Oh, I'm surprised. I'm kind of, well, you're, but you're short on pressure or you're short on flow?
I think we're short on pressure.
Pressure.
And, and that, and it was enough to trigger the, there's like a pumping station halfway up the hill? Are you beyond that or...
We're putting a pumping station, yeah, we're...
But isn't there one already there?
Side of it.
You're on the, oh, maybe that's why.
Hopefully, our water district is taking care of all this.
We tried several times. I mean, we don't want to put it in, certainly. And we tried and talked to other engineers and this is...
We should look and see what that report was.
Do you, do you know the name of that development off the top of your head?
Nua Circle.
That's the development and...
Has he had a test on the water line?
And is Nancy? U H A, Nua Circle.
The water, water district should have it too because they were involved in the whole thing.
But the residential sprinkler system is quite different than a commercial sprinkler system.
Is it, I mean...
It's a lot more large.
Yes. But getting the data would be good.
Yeah. Water district should have it in Ali.
Iqbal Ali.
Iqbal Ali is the develop, oh, what is company?
Crescent Builders.
Yeah.
Crescent Builders.
I know that.
All right. Anything else?
Thank you so much.
I'm sorry?
Appreciate it.
Yep, you guys are putting the ad in the paper and, and about our notifications and all that stuff.
We went for the town handle for us last time, I think they'll be doing it this time.
Well, the thing is, if it doesn't get advertised, then we'd have to redo it.
Can't do the meeting.
So as long as it gets done by somebody, that'd be good.
Two expired for the public hearings.
I think it's two and four, two and four.
The dates are on the paper on here.
It's on the, it's on the sheet we got.
Right, so we're handling...
They'll do it, don't worry about it, they'll take care of it.
Yeah, I worry. The, the details are what I worry about.
Right.
I appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So this goes with this.
I have to remove the...
No.
See if everything's there.
No, I think...
Yeah, that's fine.
All right, so next on our agenda, or actually, passed on our agenda...
Sitting down here, you'd be able to take a nap.
The comprehensive master plan, or comprehensive master plan planning, want to start up?
Yeah. So with the, the townwide, oh, gosh.
Townwide planning.
Townwide planning, I thought so. I mean, I'm...
Yeah, that's what...
Yeah, the townwide planning committee. I was not able to make the meeting that they had last Tuesday, but it was in preparation for the January twenty-second.
Twenty-four.
Public, Monday night, sorry.
Monday or twenty-second.
Monday, January twenty-second, yeah.
Do you want to read these?
Townwide planning meeting at seven o'clock. They're having a hearing to review chapters of the master plan, the comprehensive master plan. They're dividing it up and not doing the same, like that, not doing it all at once. And I have to go back to my email, or did you include the email? Asked, like, if you wanted to know, like, the specific chapters.
No. Well, actually, they included which chapters they were going to review and they've changed it. They had the open space in there as a chapter to review, but that was prior to getting the open space and rec plan updated, and so there, we were waiting to do the update to the open space and rec plan, to then talk about it, townwide planning, so that's not gonna be discussed.
It's gonna not be discussed at the public forum.
On the January twenty-second forum, it's being worked on. Oh, yeah, okay, so it's off. So, the economic development section, the transportation section, the education section, and housing and population, so it's mostly like the Economic Development Task Force, Transportation Committee, uh, schools and education stuff, and then the housing, affordable housing trust.
Oh.
So, there's a couple of them.
Oh, I haven't seen it. That's great.
And so, that's January twenty-second. I don't know, did anyone have any comments on any of those sections that you looked at?
No.
Are you going?
Which one?
To meeting?
I think you are, you are the member.
I'm going, no, I'm going, but I didn't know if you were going, cause it's the housing and population.
So, we have, the planning board representation is there, so...
Oh, yeah, no, I'm going to meet. I just didn't know when I saw housing there.
You're gonna be attending as the housing person?
He will send Brenda Boma.
No. She might go on her own, she might go because of the...
I was just asking out of curiosity, not because you have to be there.
Right. And then, is, is anyone doing, uh, transportation?
That would be, that would be our clerk, clerk of the works.
Oh, there would be, yeah, there would be Paul.
You're the clerk, huh? No, you're the treasurer.
He is the clerk.
Paul's the, okay, Paul's...
He's on the transportation committee, too.
Yeah, he does transportation.
So, hopefully, he'll be attending there, but I'm not sure.
What are they doing at that meeting?
It's reviewing, summary of the transportation summary.
All the chapters.
And we need more time.
Who wrote, who wrote what they're reviewing? Town, townwide planning?
The, the members of the committee.
Okay.
Reviewed previous chapters, like, the way it had been a while ago, from a long time ago, and then they have drafted new chapters.
So, they generated documents?
Right. So, it may get shorter, but we're not prepared quite yet to...
To publish.
Yeah. So, we would not be reviewed, maybe next fall.
VHB?
It'd be a great time to review it.
Cause they're supposed to present at the plan, at the town meetings.
What, this board?
Yeah.
Alright, let's go, so, is there any other comments for comprehensive planning, townwide planning?
Should be chair at some point during it.
Townwide planning.
Too bad, so sad.
Do I have any more input on it?
No.
Any other comments, anything we need to cover?
Yes, there's lots of things we have to cover. I'm done now.
Citizen comments, no.
Okay. Uh, right, we're down to reports from, oh, there was something else, was I not supposed to forget? Did I forget what I was not supposed to do?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, town meeting?
Yeah.
No.
That wasn't it.
Oh, no, there was something.
Remembered to discuss the OPM, okay, for the FISB, we did all that, the discussions, that was all the police station.
That was all that we talked about, yeah.
So, we did that, annual report, we have to talk about covering that, who's doing that?
Oh, right, our clerk is doing that, I haven't heard anything from our clerk, it's due March first.
Yeah, March first.
Can you send a reminder and a copy of the old ones, do you have the old?
Did you say you had a group of them?
I think I do, yes.
To me and Alson to Paul.
Can you send me a reminder then?
Send it to Mark. I'll keep it in the junk folder.
That goes to the junk folders.
Alright, so, annual...
I don't think they get deleted.
No, it should be in the junk folder, you know?
You can give it a whirl, and then you can...
Cause I've written a bunch of them, and it's probably better to have someone who's a writer write it, and it would probably come out much better, so I think he could do it, yeah.
Who's the writer?
Paul.
He is?
Well, he can write, he's not an engineer, so, he's got a...
So, he writes legibly?
No, I gotta correct it, he's not a mechanical engineer.
Oh, right.
He's a software coding guy.
Oh, software engineer, forget it.
He's a software coder, coding, coding.
They can't write.
So, the mechanical engineer, they have hands on.
There's lots of punctuation that I...
Alright, so, we may not have...
Lack of social connectedness when you have that issue.
Logical thinking.
Okay.
Missing.
Missing in the mechanical.
Alright, so, we've got that, is there anything else?
Did you get that? No. Logical thinking missing in the mechanical.
No, and I didn't have any other updates with other boards, which is interesting.
Okay, so, any other board updates?
Yeah.
Yes, now, FISB, can I tap FISB? Mark, are you want to go?
More FISB?
More FISB, yeah, the FISB was, we had the last night FISB meeting, they were all asking about, you know, they don't want to pay for the WFE.
Yep.
They don't want the application, this, oh, yeah, application, half in, half the application fee is fine, and also, they did talk about the chain link fence, fence, and those things, it looks like everything is correct, and the good and important part is, we will have senior center special town meeting, town meeting is scheduled for February twenty-sixth.
I don't have that on my calendar.
February twenty-sixth.
The town meeting itself?
No, this is special town meeting.
Yeah, the special town meeting, right, it's February twenty-sixth.
Just for the purpose of senior center.
Yeah, it's seven PM.
It's starting only the, so far, in the FISB, it has to go for the plan, select board, I guess.
But that's definite, that date?
Yeah.
Oh, I think they've given that to us.
So, the bid opening is on Valentine's Day, February fourteenth. From February seventeenth to February twenty-fourth, we'll have several road shows.
Road shows?
Road shows on information sessions, uh, seventeenth, uh, nineteenth is the President's Day, we don't have twenty-eighth, twenty-first, twenty-second, twenty-third, and the twenty-fourth.
Yeah, that's a cool vacation week.
Very different, very different locations, yeah.
Yes.
You can attend one of those, you know, if you come back on, uh, twenty-fourth after the vacation, either going, going to, before the vacation or after the vacation, you can attend, seventeenth.
Oh, you know, I can attend during vacation, cause I'm not going anywhere.
No.
My concern was, well, the people in the town be going places, I'm not going there.
Yeah, that's the only day we have, you know, that's the only week we have.
Yeah, that was my only concern.
So, we do the...
Senior Center, they're not going to school.
The FISB does want to, you know, open the bid, the bid is coming back on February fourteenth, bid opening on February fourteenth, so the town meeting is on twenty-sixth. If there is a disaster on that day, the fallback is, backup day is twenty-eighth.
For town meeting?
Town meeting.
Possibly.
The town election is definitely on twenty-seventh. So, what's, uh, some of the dates, you know, we do need to...
That's good, that's good, all those folks who are wound up about their tax bills will be ready for it.
Stop it.
What kind of places are they going to be, um...
So, seventeenth is at the library, uh, then, I, I had that, and, oh, I can, I can tell you, seventeen, seventeenth is at the library, and...
This special town meeting?
No, 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 the information, well, cause I wanna, I would like to attend the information...
Is this special time meeting at the high school again, at seven?
This is the information.
Okay, so, it's a regular town meeting, seven at...
Yes, but I just wanted to know where the road shows were going to, like, where it was, because I would like to attend.
They're gonna put it on the town, on the town...
No, I can, I can, I can give you the tent date you want, see the...
The pilot in line. No, I'll be there.
You close there?
Yeah, I made that, seventeenth.
Yeah. What, what time?
Christ, Christ Lutheran Church.
What time?
It's a Saturday, ten AM.
Oh, so, it's at the Christ and church on the seventeenth?
Yes.
Okay.
February twentieth, senior center, it's February twentieth, Tuesday, senior center, three PM Hartwell's, one twenty-seven Hartwell Street. February twenty-first, Wednesday, uh, Angel Brook Clubhouse, we want to do it at six PM if it is not three PM. February twenty-second.
So, come at six and miss the three o'clock thing?
No, if the clubhouse is available at six PM, we prefer to do it.
Till six.
The FISB wanted to do it at six PM, because a lot of last town meet, last thing, you know, a lot of people can't find.
Thursday, yeah.
It's on Thursday, no, Angel Brook is on Wednesday, February twenty-first. So, if six PM is not there, three PM. February twenty-second, three PM Archit Noll, and then, we'll go six PM at the Bevan Public Library.
That's big, big time to go.
So, if you want to, if you want to arrange the wine tasting on that day, that'll be good.
That would be good, I don't know if I can serve it.
Yeah, you can get a license.
Yeah, I could get a one-day license.
One-day permit, you know?
Just for the...
Who do you have to know, you know?
Yeah, from the, yeah, from the selectmen, when they approve with a little bit of wine and cheese.
They'd like it, probably.
Yeah.
You might get more people there.
Yep. February twenty-third, Hillside Village at three PM.
Where?
Hillside.
Hillside Village.
Hillside Village Clubhouse at three PM. February twenty-fourth, Saturday, if no one has seen the, our town new police station, that's where it has.
It's gonna be at the town?
It's at town hall.
Town Police Station.
Oh.
What time is that?
What time? Uh, I think that's a Saturday, ten PM.
AM.
AM.
I'm sorry, ten AM.
Well, if we did it at ten PM, we really could have the wine and cheese.
All these dates are not confirmed.
At the police station.
Yeah, police station.
They give free rides home.
All these dates are not...
Yeah, free rides home.
I got to tell you this also, all these dates are not yet confirmed too, but these are all the tent date.
Alright, but I'll, yeah, I'll look up.
This will be on the town website too, right?
So, once it is confirmed, they may plan to put it on the, yeah, a lot of, lot of various different places.
What church is it gonna be on the seventeenth?
Christ Lutheran.
Christ Lutheran Church, all the way down, so, we have the Christmas tree, we have la, uh...
Across from the high school.
Oh, okay. Yeah, opposite to the high school.
Alright, so, that's the FISB summary?
That's the FISB summary.
Not so summary?
Yeah.
Wintering?
Housing, how we doing?
Good.
Good.
Let's see, oh, the, the interesting thing is the Orchard, not Orchard Hall, yeah.
You had the...
No, no, cost certification for...
Afritaris.
Afritaris came in. Uh, Ali thought he made five percent, the auditor thinks he made more like sixteen, fifteen, sixteen percent.
Fourteen point seven four.
Or twenty percent.
Oh.
But anyways, not over twenty percent, so we don't get any money back.
Ah, so, three times more than what he's paying.
Yes, well, thanks to that, so he's off by two hundred percent, but that's okay.
Wow.
We would expect nothing less.
Can we add to that if he doesn't add to it?
Anything else that you might, you might be forgetting now?
That's not, oh, his thing, your, your letter there?
Okay, the thing is, is that, this is just a draft that came from Mass Housing, okay? We have till February ninth to respond, okay? What we did is, we asked for an extension to the twenty-eighth of February, we had till the ninth of February, we asked for an extension to the twenty-eighth of February, because this, um, the, um, housing specialist talked to Jennifer Weir, who was from Mass Housing, and she said, if the town needs more time, it's not a problem, okay? Because if we don't respond, if we don't ask for an extension, then February ninth comes, then they'll make a fine, and then we won't have nothing to say about it. So, what they're gonna do is now, is Affordable Housing has copies of it, I have a copy of it, Anita has a copy of it, hopefully, she's gonna give a copy, you know, pass it out to the Board of Selectmen. What the Affordable Housing Trust wants to do is, they want the Board of Selectmen and the ZBA to review it, and if they have any questions, to get back to the Housing Authority, so that we can, you know...
No, the reviewing people.
Affordable Housing Trust?
Yeah, so we could get it back to you, so that you can give it to the specialist to make out the letter with the questions.
Yeah, okay, yeah, we were gonna try to get one letter to send out to...
That's great.
That says that we either agree or disagree, I think it's gonna be a more positive letter though, that we like the...
That's good.
And thank them very much for doing it.
And the agent, the Affordable Housing Trust's consultant reviewed it?
Yeah, she reviewed it, she's gonna write the letter, she's familiar with the people and all.
Now, that's great, someone who knows, has seen these before.
Right. And, uh, with, on that, oh, she, she was very, she said that Ali did a very, you know, like, a, a, a review, and then they did, they really dug into it, and, you know, made sure that he wasn't selling units for ten bucks, and he wasn't, you know, boosting up the price of the pro, of the land or something like that, and just to make sure his profit was, you know, what it should be.
And she thought everything was copacity?
Yeah, I mean, as much as it could be, but...
Well, two hundred percent off, but that's still within the, he's still under the amount that he's allowed, so that's all that matters.
But that doesn't mean that the town, if the town chooses, they can have it, themselves have it reviewed.
Right.
Okay. And, but, I, I don't, we're not that close, if it was like, the auditor was getting to like twenty or nineteen percent, maybe then it'd be more worth it to get over twenty and get some money back, and I don't think we're gonna get there, you know?
That's, yeah, that sounds good.
But it was a nice experience, and then we're gonna have to do it with ninety-two North Main Street.
Yeah, but that's not gonna be till...
For a while, but I mean, it's gonna be the same thing.
Yeah, sometime this year, cause they're not even done yet.
Oh, right, I mean, it took years for it.
And there was some bad news, there was no ninety-two North Main Street, the housing specialist, the lady that was in charge of the people's properties, that was, you know, the director of that, you know, the lottery, all of that, she left the company, she went to work for Wynn, which is doing the, the casino in Boston, so she talked to two other ladies there, and what they, what they told her is, is that they had eighty-two people for the lottery.
Applications.
Nobody from West Boylston applied for the, uh, local preference, they haven't had any, any local, they haven't had any affordable units rented.
Right.
They do have some, uh, the building inspector has already issued a temporary certificate of occupancy for Building A, only a temporary, because he still has, you know, a lot more work to do, and we've already discussed this, we won't go into it any further, he can't, and of course, he's, the winter's here, so he can't do the playgrounds, you know, he still has a lot of stuff to finish, but, um, they did do the final, the final paving on the road before the winter set in, VHB went out there and inspected, everything was fine, so, but it's kinda sad, I don't know what's gonna happen, I don't know what the process is, how long this, you know, this developer wait, you know, on rentals, if he's not getting, uh, the bad part about it is, had, in my personal opinion, had ZBA known that they could have done fifty percent of the medium instead of eighty percent and taken less...
And gotten the rents down.
Affordables, then the rents might have went down, we didn't know that, you know, even though we had a, you know, someone to help us, they didn't, you know, explain that to us, but now we know, so, if supposedly another project comes in and it's gonna be a rental or whatever, then we can, we can look at that, so...
And what, what she says that, she thinks is gonna end up happening is, regular applicants who are close to the affordable threshold and all, they're gonna suggest that they go through the, the affordable one if they want to, and they'll get a whatever, it is two hundred dollar cheaper, three hundred dollar cheaper rent.
You know, the bottom line is, you know, this is a very, very, very expensive...
Absolutely.
So, if you have that kind of, even affordable rental, renting money, you can buy a more house, and buy a mortgage.
And a lot of it has to do with the, cause they take the medium of the town, and a lot of it has to do with the medium of the town, so if the medium of the town is high, it's eighty percent of that, see, if the, if the medium was lower, even with the eighty percent, then the rents would be, at least that's the way I understand it.
It's a median of the county, but yeah, generally, it's the county.
Especially like now, you look at what's next door to me, they just sold both of those units, one for two sixty-nine, one for two seventy-nine, and now supposedly, he's bringing in another set, up to a...
Well, that was one that I wanted to talk about, so...
Wait, uh...
Any other boards?
Wait, there's other stuff that happened in affordable housing, let's see, eighty-seven Maple?
Orchard Hall, yeah.
Archit Noll.
Any updated, um...
What was the COMCOM, uh, public hearing?
I didn't go with it.
He didn't?
Something about the engineering.
Okay. No, I, I don't think we have anything else then.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, good job.
No, there was, there was one thing, I don't know.
If you don't, we'll pack up with next meeting.
Yeah, if it comes up, um, I think that was it, we don't have any other boards and committees, uh, we have minutes?
No, citizens' comments, we have a citizen.
Citizens' comments.
Citizen is sitting here.
Oh, do you have comments?
Yeah, the only, the only thing I wanted to tell you was, you know, about the buildings that are next, next to me, okay? He is only putting up the building as he sells it, so, once he sells one building, then he'll put up another one, okay? So, that, that's, that's gonna be, that's gonna be going on, so, that's basically, as far as the Girl Scouts, it's been kind of a, you know, with them...
Oh, from the ZBA?
Yeah. So, they haven't come to us yet, okay? They just finally called us to see what they needed to do, they still need to go to the building inspector kid and get a letter of denial, you know, and as soon as that, they knew that, then they'll come to us. Hopefully, if they get all their paperwork in and everything, we can get it into the newspaper two weeks prior, then they should be on the February, um, agenda, and the municipal light plant is put in for a special permit, they're putting a, some kind of a flywheel They're putting a, some kind of a flywheel down on solar panels, which I think is really outstanding. Because if you think about it, and John Fitch will explain it at the meeting, but I'll just give you a brief.
Wait, when's that meeting?
There's only, there's only two other locations in the country that have this flywheel application. And one is in Hawaii, one is in California. West Boylston was chosen for some reason to be the first one on the East Coast. So I think that this is like a really big thing, so I think people should really be.
That's where we, we got a grant from the.
Yeah, he's got the money, everything. He just permitted.
Yeah, but, you know, we had to think of that too, you know, we don't know how much noise it's going.
It doesn't make much noise.
I thought it was underground, but.
Underground, but it does make some noise, and this is one of those things for the Angel Brook. You know, we will expect some.
There's a train.
There's a train.
It's gonna make more noise than a train.
Train once in a while. This one will be constant, twenty-four hours a day.
But if you watch the, he sent us a video. I watched the video, okay? It doesn't seem like there's a lot of noise, okay? But like Raj says, we don't know until, until it's actually installed.
It's sometimes vibrations.
And then we hear it, you know? But what I did ask John is, is that once it's installed, okay, if the special permit gets approved and it's installed, I would like for him to send us. Let us know that it's installed, so that the board can go down and actually see it in operation and hear how it works.
And then what happens then?
If there is a sound, what the board will do.
More than acceptable noise, then what?
I don't think it's gonna be.
Well, I agree, but what, then why would you even check?
I'm just, because I'm, I'm nosy. I just wanna see what it looks like.
If you check and you find something that's bad, do you have a means?
I guess we'll have to, I guess we'll have to deal with that situation when it arises.
Well, but you could also in your hearing discuss that and say, what are the options in the future if there are issues? And what can we do and maybe condition it, so it's gotta be running before you get your final approvals.
But with all, you know, to be honest with you, with all the traffic and stuff that goes on there, I don't think it's gonna bother the people.
But the problem is, you know.
I think the traffic on that road is probably more noise to Angel Brook.
Agree. I, I totally agree, but the problem is, you know, traffic, train, everything is once in a while. But this one, continuously, it will be zooming.
Zooming.
We'll have to see.
Well, in a past.
So.
I built.
I think it is, yeah.
And they are screamers, the ones we made, but they're much more powerful. We made three thousand horsepower unentorquable power supplies with them. And it's just the, the disc rotating through the air is like a turbine of its own, not intentional.
So.
But it makes a lot of noise. We put enclosures over them, is what we did to quiet them down.
So it shouldn't be making a noise like a windmill?
No, not like a windmill, like high pitched.
I don't know what it is. I don't know what they're proposing.
Although, I don't know what the intent is.
Right? You'll send us a packet for comments before it happens?
Oh, okay. And we don't have to worry about it.
Of course we do. We have to, we have, we don't.
I know.
You don't have a choice in that.
What's the intent of their project? I mean, are they, they wanna store a lot of energy or just something to smooth that down?
I haven't seen, I haven't read the.
The battery, storing, storing energy.
Yeah, but you can't store that much in this flywheel.
Well, I thought they'd get a solar panels, so that when the solar panels are pushing out energy, they wanted to store that.
You can't, you can't store, you can store minutes of energy.
Well, the best thing to do is, is wait till you get your packet, read the packet, and then come to the meeting.
Not with a, not with a reasonably sized flywheel. Come to the mess of them.
Come to the hearing and you'll find out.
I will. That's why I asked you the date, you said there isn't one.
What we're gonna do is, is that now that I know it's there, we're gonna send a copy of the, um, email that he sent us with the link. And we're gonna have, see if we can get it put on the T V. So that they can show it, so that people can see exactly what it is before they come to the meeting. And I'll let you know when that's gonna happen.
Okay, so next on the agenda is paying invoices and minutes. So we have some invoices. Who's our treasurer?
Well, no, those are, those, oh, you're gonna give them to collect money? I didn't have much to get on.
Please, please.
You need to contact V H B. And say, okay, these are the projects. How much more should, so we're not, so you're not gonna have to contact the owners.
Okay.
Every two weeks. You wanna get some money in the fund, so that you could call V H B. And say.
How much more money do you need?
How much do you think it's gonna be for the next three months?
I can do that.
That's right.
So this will be, this will be in my folder, but it's.
Yep. Alright, so minutes, do we have minutes?
We do.
Yeah, motion to approve December thirteenth minutes.
Nice. Do we have a, do we have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Sure.
Sure. Alright, so the other, only other thing that I had was on the motel, what's it called now?
Oh, I.
It's called Grayson, Grayson by the, by the reservoir.
Yeah, okay.
What's it called?
Grayson at the reservoir.
Oh, Grayson at the reservoir.
There's the building inspector.
So Big Daddy. There was a question you raised at one of our meetings about. You were talking just about your property and their property. They were storing a whole bunch of stuff on your property.
But they still asked.
Access.
And they still are.
Is there a problem with that? Is that something you guys are complaining to us? Because you were, you were saying to the planning board that there was a problem there. This will forward it to Craig with the other issues that he needs to.
Well, I've already discussed it with the building inspector. He's gonna look into it. Because what happened is, is that we're going to wait until the spring comes and see how bad the conditions are. He's gonna have to redo the road, because he's tore up the whole road. And he's been parking and using the grass for his storage of his piping and his, his vehicles and stuff.
Without permission of the.
From what I was told, I was told by, by, uh, the question.
Well, I'm not gonna get in the middle, so.
No, you don't have to.
If you want the planning board to, because, well, they're in the site plan review process, so now would be the time, if you want, send a letter or an email from the.
I'll talk to the condo association important.
Because then I, and then I won't bring it up until I hear a formal thing. Alright.
Okay, here's also.
That's, yeah, it's, um, I think we're all set. Welcome.
Thanks.
Did you sign it?
I'm, I'm not officially here.
Great, great. I'd like to enter meeting.
Did you approve the senior center, senior center project? Did you approve it?
I have the plans for it.
Some. That's, we get a lot of plans.
Some?
Yeah, we had the plans.
Not just the floor, that's not what you need.
Well, I've got, I've got.
We got the plans.
I have the plans, I just don't have, you know, fire suppression and all the.
Right, all the stuff.
All the stuff. It's just, they want to get it in before the, uh, building code change firstly here.
That's right, that's in December, right?
Right, so they wanted to squeeze it under the wire, so it wouldn't entail any changes. The building go change.
Hmm, that's why, that's why we don't need a second review, because they're doing everything top shelf.
As we go.
Smartness.
Top shelf.
It was a good plan for them, because they were in, I think it was December twenty-ninth, with the application and the.
Yeah. Here, here.
Actually, the plans wasn't here. They dropped the application off. Next day, FedEx brought the plans.
Okay.
Alright, so we, uh, I think we're all set.
Okay.
Minutes we've done, bills, do we have any bills today?
Have a good one.
Thank you. Um.
Motion to adjourn.
No, questions?
Motion to adjourn.
That's the question.
Talk about the cannabis control commission.
And this other thing, this memo, municipal department heads.
That's for the May town meeting.
May town meeting, that's.
And that's, on the town meeting, are we gonna do any bylaws?
We can hold out until.
No.
I didn't, I don't have any in my list of things to do.
And even the cannabis one?
We don't know what the state is doing. I thought the federal government said, no, it's, we're enforcing the federal rules.
Blame by law?
Hold on, we'll talk that in a second, so cannabis.
But I thought we, the easiest thing to do was just to lump it in with the recreational, I mean, the medical. The same rules apply to the recreational stores as the medical marijuana.
Oh, the locations.
Locations of that, well, the zoning, I mean, that's the zoning bylaw. So if, if anybody came in, they'd be, you know.
They'd have to go to the industrial district.
And no school and things like that.
Right.
I mean, that seems like an easy thing to do.
Um.
And it keeps it under control, so honey farms can't come in and ask, or cabbula farms to take, can I sell the pot grounds? Or the movie theater. I think that'll be fun.
Yeah, but, uh, that one, recreation marijuana, they are still working on it, right?
Right.
The state is still working on it. When they are working on it, how can you put a bylaw on that, you know?
The driving school, yeah.
Driving school.
So let's, why don't you look into what the status is?
Well, I think it's up there, but if we need it open.
No, I mean, the status of our bylaws, our bylaws have nothing in it, so it's not allowed supposedly. Do we want?
I thought it was the other way. If they don't address it, it's open. It's not controlled.
That's not what it used to be. If it's not specifically allowed in the bylaw.
I think that there's some bylaws that say that. But if there's something like windmills and things like that, can people not put up windmills in, in West Boylston because there's no bylaw protecting it?
Unless, where there's a federal allowance for the pot, energy generation and F C C.
Yeah.
Those supersede the local bylaws. But if someone wanted to put in a, well, one of the things that I've heard is we don't have anything about construction contractors' yards. There's nothing in the bylaws about construction contractor yards. Where are they allowed then? Can you put them in a residential district? Doesn't say you can't.
So that's, that was the way I, my understanding of bylaws, that if it wasn't found anywhere in a bylaw, it's allowed. You can't say that it has to be in a bylaw before it can be.
I thought it was that way, but maybe that's a question we should ask the town council.
That is a good question to ask, so it's clear.
Like a nice bylaw.
What?
Nice.
The noise.
If you're, if you're not, not allowed to make noise, can you make all the noise you want?
Yeah.
Well, there's a nuisance.
But there is, but there is a bylaw.
The nuisance law, but the nuisance laws only according to who thinks it's a nuisance.
Yeah.
It's not defined.
There is always a subjective problem.
Right.
You know?
Not that I mean can drive.
And, and how about other?
Town Council for use, if not specific.
Or, or if absent from bylaws.
And allowed or not? Okay, good question. And based on the response, we can then think about this whole contractor yards, medical or, uh, medicine, what is it? Recreation marijuana? And then.
I mean, I thought the easiest thing to do would just be to lump it in with the medicals right now, and then we could change it later, just so that it's under control and people don't come in and.
We could, but I'm not sure at town meeting whether they want it just to be in the industrial area, so we have to.
That's the most restrictive thing we could do right now.
They do, or not allow it at all.
I don't wanna go that way.
But didn't at town meeting, didn't they not, they didn't want to get, so I don't see how you guys can do anything if.
Well, we can, we can bring it up and they can vote it down. That's what we can do.
Yeah. But that's something we need to, let's figure out what, what it is.
The rules.
And then we'll.
Okay.
We'll work on that. So when do we have to get things in? April?
Uh, who's right?
Non-financial.
I think your best bet is to wait till October to do it, because May is too, is just too.
May twenty-first?
But if you know what we're doing in May, I'd be happy to kind of ease into October.
No, no, I understand that, but I'm just saying, to try to get it on the May, I think it's gonna be way too, too, too hard to do. And besides, there's just so much going on in, in the May, you know, you have a budget and stuff. It's too difficult.
I would agree.
April fourth is the deadline.
I think, you know, yeah, do, do your outline and, you know, get everything processed. But I don't think, I think that the recommendation that I would say is not to try to get it until October.
What's your bylaw that you're writing? You're writing a bylaw for us to do?
Yep, accessory apartment.
When, when do we do that?
That's not gonna go until October.
Alright, um.
No, there's something else.
So who's attending the C M R P C meetings?
I am. Tomorrow.
Stupid things.
Is it tomorrow?
All the pieces.
It's not tomorrow, is it?
Yeah, that is tomorrow.
Today's the tenth, right?
No.
It's October meeting tomorrow.
Yeah, and it's at, um, the old building.
Yeah.
They didn't move yet.
They didn't move yet? I thought they did.
Seven o'clock tomorrow. We need time, we need to make time.
Seven o'clock tomorrow, you can do it, good.
They still at Union Station?
I guess temporarily, so I mean, they weren't supposed to, but they are.
Will they move?
So they were supposed to move in December, but something is some glitch.
They're gonna be on Main Street?
One on Bundy.
Little building, just down the road.
So I don't know what are the glitches.
On Main Street.
You can see it from the highway. Go to Worcester.
That's the big city.
Stay on about two ninety.
Just opposite to the D C. You will be.
Oh, yeah, okay.
That's it.
Alright, anything else?
I had something else, I don't remember what it was.